Has not arrived yet, Jim Chilvers.
I'm present.
Mark Dietrich has not arrived yet, John Dwyer.
Here.
Henry Hollander.
Here.
Dick Matthews will be absent this evening, Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
And Steve Tims.
Here.
Would we... Everyone please stand and take the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
all. I'd accept the motion for approval of the order of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to make?
I move for approval of the order of agenda.
Second. Paul's man.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Accept the motion for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from September 3, 2009.
Second.
And that motion passes 5-0.
We're now at the time in the meeting where we have a public forum, an opportunity for anyone to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda this evening. And I have one speaker who'd like to speak, Rose, and I'm sorry, I can't, I can't read it. Rose?
You want to speak on the agenda item as opposed to, you're welcome to speak later
if you'd...
Yeah, I'll speak later.
Okay, thank you. Is that, okay. With that, with that in mind, I'd like to open the public hearing for case number WZ0905, an application filed by Exempla Lutheran for the approval of a master sign plan with a variance to allow the planning commission to exceed the 50 percent increase for sign size, number, location pursuant to section 26 dash 708 E2 of the zoning and development code for property zone planned, hospital development, PHD, and located at 8300 West 38th Avenue. Do we have a staff report? Could you spell your name for the record?
Thank you. Ken Johnston with the city's community development department, J-O-H-N-S-T-O-N-E. I'll have a brief presentation. The applicant is really going to run you through the details of their, their application, but I'll just provide a little logistical setup to give some context for what we're hearing this evening. I would also enter into the record the staff report and five exhibits that accompany it into the, into the record. And would also note that the public notice was properly served, the property was posted for 15 days prior to the public hearing, and property owners within 300 feet, which was a total of about 170 properties, were, were notified of this hearing. As was described by the chair, this is a request for approval of a master sign plan, not something that comes before the commission very often, but really gets processed very similarly to a final development plan. They are requesting variances as well, which is something that they have the ability to request through this, through this hearing process. As I think everyone is aware, Exempla Lutheran Hospital has a significant presence in the community. They have about 100 acre campus right in the center of town, not far from here, between 32nd Avenue and 38th Avenue west of Wadsworth. They're in the midst of a significant remodel and expansion, several hundred million dollars, and really this is kind of the conclusion of that process that we're here to discuss tonight, which is an important part of the, the campus, which is their wayfinding sign package. It's something that was not established during the final development plan process when the hospital expansion was approved, but it's certainly something that they would like to have addressed for a variety of reasons that have been well outlined in the application materials. I'll let the applicant speak to that. But they do have a complex campus, they do have a clientele that can be distressed and in need of assistance in finding locations on the campus, and of course, they do have sometimes an older clientele, all of which factors into the, the real importance of having a clear wayfinding package. In terms of this process, the city sign code does not really well address sign packages for campuses such as this. It's really more oriented towards individual commercial industrial sites, but it does contemplate that a, a large campus situation like this might present itself, and that's why there are the provisions for approving a master sign code. And that's a process that goes just to the planning commission, not to city council. The master sign code process itself builds into it the fact that they can receive a 50 percent increase in sign area as part of a well-designed sign package. The applicant this evening is requesting a more significant increase beyond the, the city standard sign code requirements, so they are requesting a variance through this approval process. The, it is important in reviewing variances that you review the criteria by which the planning commission can grant variances. The applicant has provided an analysis of those criteria in their materials, and the staff has provided analysis as well in our staff report, and we, both those analyses do find that the proposed variances meet the, meet the criteria from, from the zoning code. Again, I'll leave it to the, to the experts here to go into detail on, on Exempla's requests, but it's essentially three different types of signage. It's a series of directional signs, both internal and external to the campus. It's a series of banners and a series of wall identification signs, all of which are being proposed as part of this package. One of the things that they're, that they're requesting and staff is supporting is, is that the, the package that would be approved tonight, if it were approved tonight, would build into it some flexibility so that this could have some, some length to it as their needs evolve over time. They'd have some ability on the internal portion of the sign package to, to be able to locate those at their discretion with a few conditions. They would need to comply with the designs that they're providing before you in, in the materials tonight. They would also need to ensure that site triangle visibility requirements are met and that it doesn't become a traffic hazard for those internal circulation system, which really, to a large extent, function like public roads. They are private facilities, but they're used by the multiple different lots within, within the complex and the multiple different uses. One clarification, and then I'll, I'll close my remarks and turn it over to Exempla, but that we'd like to ask planning commission's consideration of, which is illuminated signs. Some of the internal directional signs will be illuminated, some will not. For the illuminated ones, it is important in our minds that those would require permits. So with the, we certainly support the, the fact that this package would exempt them from future planning permits. We, we would like to require that, and really the national electrical and state electrical laws require that we have them pull building permits for the electrical work, and I think they're amenable to that requirement. So I can provide language when, at the appropriate time.
Does anybody have any questions for, for Ken before we take the rest of the presentation? I, I have one. Could you just walk through for me the actual permitting, what types of signs will require permits going forward and what they can do on their own again?
Right.
I'm a little unclear.
Yep. Any of the signs that are visible from the public street system, whether those be entry signs or directional signs at the entries off 32nd Avenue or 38th Avenue, or any of the wall signage that's visible from the exterior street system would, would require permits. On, go ahead. On, on the internal signs, the internal directional signs, some of those would be illuminated internally, some would not. If they're internally illuminated, require electricity, obviously, then we'll, we'd require a building permit for that, but that would be a fairly expedited permit.
But this package sets, say, the actual maximum size of those things is firmly established, they can't go beyond the boundaries we've set here tonight without some separate process?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant want to make his presentation? State your name for the record, please.
Everett Allen Davis.
And are you the applicant or a consultant or...
Yeah, I'm the vice president of facilities development for Exempla Healthcare. I'm here representing Lutheran Medical Center.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to the planning commission tonight. Can I introduce the team, or is that something that's...
Absolutely.
Okay. Tonight, first gentleman is Bruce Fong. Bruce is our director for, for planning and construction for Exempla Healthcare. We have Cheryl, who is our senior planner. We have Roger Hill with Aesthetics Incorporated, who is our signage consultant, our expert that's going to give the presentation tonight. Okay. Our intent, as was stated, is to present our proposed master plan for signage and request for the variance. As Exempla Lutheran Medical Center continues to revitalize itself and expand to meet the current needs of the community for healthcare for now and into the future, we've expanded quite a bit over the past two or three years, especially with this large project. And where we're at today, we have a very large complex with multiple destinations that require a lot of signs. We have, on any, any day, we have thousands of vehicles, pedestrians, which are physicians, visitors, patients, staff, in a very dense area because we're starting to use up some of the landmass. So we want to be, we want to be good stewards. We want to ensure that anyone that comes on that campus can enter and exit that campus in a safe manner. And so our intent is to present the master plan, give you a current picture of our current signage, and where our complications and our risks and our concerns are with a proposed plan for the future. Developing this plan, assisting us with developing this plan is Roger. Roger has spent a lot of time evaluating, assessing the current signs. He has developed a plan for us to present tonight. Roger comes to us from Aesthetics, Inc., and he has spent a great deal of time with other healthcare institutions across the United States, so I think he has a lot to bring and offer. So with that, if there are no other questions, I'd like to introduce Roger.
Would you mind spelling your name for the record?
I was waiting for that. R-O-G-E-R, second name H-I-L-L.
It was a tough one. We would have never got there.
Great. You've all been issued quite a lot of information about the justifications of the master sign plan and also the master sign plan specifics, and also arguments for the variance, and those have been reiterated by the staff and the staff report pretty well. So my, the presentation today isn't going to go through everything we have in those documents or in as much detail, but what I wanted to do... Oops. Previous. Okay. Let's cover these topics. An overview of existing campus directional signs, and why hospital signs themselves need to be larger in more, in more quantities than typical developments, and also to show how proposed new signage on this campus will provide a unification and integrative of the signage in general campus-wide. And this is one of the, one of the hopes of the master sign plan and the municipal code. In addition, I want to discuss some other components of the master sign plan. So existing campus directional signs are illustrated on this plan here, with the, with the exception of the new construction area. And the new construction area has no permanent signs because they've been demolished in order to reconfigure the roadway and the parking lots and the whole entry area. So those I'll show later. There'll be basically more yellow dots on that plan and on that large plan. The signs that have circles around them are on 38th Street and 36th Street, and those signs actually aren't a part of this master sign plan because they've already been handled through one of the PHD amendments that's gone previously to this. And they've been given a special sign type designation of freestanding signs. There are only two allowed for development. We had three driveways, so three were accepted as part of the PHD. But all the other yellow dots and some more to go would be a part of this master sign plan in terms of site directional signage. The sizes and quantities that, that the hospital campus has now are generally reasonable and typical of the industry. In fact, you'll find through some of the illustrations going to show, they're, they're on the small side of what campus directional signs are in a hospital. Currently, we're planning new directional signs to support the new north expansion driveways and parking areas, and that was that construction area, replacement signs for existing directional signs, introducing a new sign style, and a new wayfinding system to make signage more effective across the campus. So here's an existing directional sign on campus. There are a couple of different sizes. This is the smaller of the two. They're about five by seven, 35 square feet, and about eight foot tall. Here you see another one. This is the larger one. It's maybe six inches taller, a foot taller than the others, still about eight foot tall. And you'll notice the abundance of information on these signs. It would be pretty untypical of another kind of development. So they really had to use up all the space in order to get directions to all these areas. Part of what we're doing is trying to unify the style of signage on campus. Now, the, the signs that I showed you on the plan of 38th Street and 32nd Street are the signs here on the left. So that was established, what was it, about a year ago or so, Al? And so the new signs are going to derive from that style and, and replace all the blue signs on campus. So once again, they'll have a unified sign style throughout campus, and the signs themselves will have various sizes. So they'll be from small to large depending on where they go and the appropriateness of their size. So you can see some of the sizes here are in the neighborhood of 38 to 46 square feet, but some will be considerably smaller than this. And it might be noted that the variance that we're trying to get allowance for only allows for, for a plentiful number of signs, in other words, as many signs as you want on campus, of only four square feet. Now, four square feet is about the size of a stop sign, and so you can imagine all this information going on a sign that's small, it's just simply not, the code, the municipal code simply wasn't, wasn't ever written for a sign of this type or the use of this type. So here's a signage comparison of what there is now and what we're proposing. There are really going to be very little impact in terms of size. They're the same width as existing signs, about the same overall height, and we might have just a little bit more information on the bottom. Here's some examples of directional signs from other medical campuses, and they're kind of around the country. I'm just going to show you four here. There are more that we included in our report, but you can see the square footage of these typical signs, and these are on-campus signs. They're not the ones out on the perimeter roadways of getting into these campuses. 72 square feet, 55 square feet, 54 square feet, 63 square feet. So you're only five by seven, 35 square feet now, and we're going to be just slightly more than that. We're well within the parameters of the industry. And you can see on some of these signs how much information some of them have to have on their signs. That's what a wayfinding system, by the way, is all about, is we can reduce the amount of text on the signs. So why do medical center signs need to be larger than typical developments? Well, they're very large developments with many campus destinations to list on signs. So we have to route people around campuses and not just tell them where the, the visible entrance is from any point where you are. So you can't just find your way on a campus by dead reckoning. I'll go to that corner of the building. Many first-time patients and visitors, they've never been there before. Patients are sent to multiple destinations on the same campus while, during their visits. Patients are frequently under much more emotional and physical stress than normal and tend to be much less cognitively aware. Also, a high percentage of elderly patients whose eyesight and cognitive processing are less adept and a little slower sometimes. Also, emergency signage. Emergency signage on campuses has to be repetitive and very clear because ED-bound drivers are frequently very distracted with their passenger and need maximum clarity and repetitive signage. Virtually a misturn and a time-critical ED run can be life-threatening. So we have emergency and a big block, big block letters on sign after sign through campus. And just in case you're, you think you might have already passed it, we have a sign telling you you haven't. National statistics, 70 percent of ED patients arrive by car, not by ambulance. 60 percent of stroke victims arrive by car. At Exempla Lutheran, Exempla Lutheran's ED is the busiest in the state of Colorado. Is that right, Al? And as a matter of fact, in a four-state area around Colorado, amazingly enough. There's 70,000 ED visits to that facility every year. That averages about 190 ED patients per day. So clarity of signage on our signs is absolutely essential. So I'd go for the new signage being planned to add to this. Now, remember, some of the signage is going to be replacement signage, and this is a style change. But here is in the new construction area, and here's an enlargement, so all these yellow dots would be added to the previous plan. And you can see all the different destinations and turns and parking areas that we need to have some sort of signage for. So it's routine. You would, you would find this, you would expect to have this kind of signage on a campus like this. Now, we have a new wayfinding system we're going to introduce to campus, and what that is on this particular campus is, is a scheme of numbering building entrances. So now, direction giving on campus by schedulers can, can direct patients to an actual doorway on campus. And the street signage, the directional signage that you're looking at will actually introduce those numbers on the sign when this is introduced. We're not going to rule it all out right away. That's going to take next year's budget probably, but when they do, the directional sign nomenclature will then pick that up. So as you can see, we do an area sort of in a driveway around, and all the, all the entrance numbers are consecutive, so you'll always know that if you're at entrance six, entrance nine is not far behind, and you're going in the right direction. Now, the fire department thought this was a great idea because to them it made great sense. If someone reports something, an incident at entrance six, building at entrance six, the fire department will know exactly where that is. So they plan to request a copy of this and put it, and issue it in their standard staff booklets. Here's what those things look like. They're not a big sign on the building. They'll have a, the buildings, the, the size may vary just a little bit because the architecture of each entrance is a little bit different, but they'll be a little like that. So that's the directional signage, and another category to, to introduce was banners. The municipal code does not allow banners on poles, and it restricts the number of banners you can have on an individual development. But Exempla Lutheran, with its six-block private streets, would like to have permission to put banners along their light poles or in parking lots. And they allow them on buildings, and they want to put some, put some more on buildings probably as well. We're going to do a few here at the main entry right away. And part of the reason for doing banners on a campus is just one of many methods in a multifaceted approach to help calm and reassure patients as they approach the medical center, because a lot of them are very worried about outcomes, both of themselves and also their, their loved ones when they're going to visit. So they can also be used to demarcate areas of parking to help returning patients find their car. You've seen that in parking lots, I'm sure, in various, various places. So the master plan would allow the use of banners on poles throughout the property. Other considerations of both of these issues is the campus perimeter is the only thing that's really exposed to the city fabric. So in the banner program, if you're using banners up public streets, you don't have to worry about these conflicting with, with what you're doing out in your public streets because ours are really internal to the campus. The municipal code encourages master sign plans to provide signage consistency in development, and as you noticed, that's exactly what we're trying to do. And finally, the municipal design guidelines are also being followed. We've reviewed them, and we've adapted our signs to, to follow the municipal design guidelines. So just to review the components of the sign plan and just an overview, it covers directional signs on campus, a new campus wayfinding system with building entrance numbering. It allows multiple banners on campus and banners on poles. And there's a variance component to it, which allows the master sign plan to exceed the municipal code's allowable sign sizes by more than 50 percent for directional signs. So that's in a nutshell. We do have additional slides if you find it necessary to review the master plan or some other particulars about it.
Do we want to put the lights back on? Thanks. Does anyone have any, any question for, after all that, Mr. Hill? Go ahead.
Could you say a little bit, I didn't see much of anything in the presentation, about illuminated signs? Where are those are going to be? The purpose of the illuminated signs, what type of illumination we're, we're talking about?
Illuminated signs are one of our recommendations, but we haven't formulated an exact plans on which ones are going to be illuminated in what way. The campus signs that are going around the main entrance of the hospital are almost, almost all of them, except for the very smallest signs, internally illuminated. And to conform with the design guidelines, we are using, they encourage night lighting to be light letters on a dark face. So instead of having a full glowing face, we're having cutout letters in an opaque face. So that's what we're doing there. In terms of directional signs throughout campus, our replacement signs, they are by and large not illuminated, with exception of the emergency department turn sign at their driveway. We are recommending a change to that. And how many are internally illuminated versus spotlighted from without is probably a budgetary consideration by the campus at the time they, they're going to do it, but we intend to do that.
Follow-up? Go ahead.
Flashing?
Never.
No flashing?
No.
And so if I understood correctly, the majority of the self-illuminated signs will be outward facing as opposed to internal to the campus? Is that, is that correct or not?
Could you, could you explain what you're...
Will they be right along 38th Avenue and 32nd Avenue, or will they be on the private streets within the campus?
No, as a matter of fact, all the signs in this master sign plan are internal to the campus and are not, probably will not be even seen from the public way. They're certainly not meant to be read from the public way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question, Jim? That was, that was my only concern, is they are internal signs and nothing that's being broadcast at the neighbors or conflicting with any other sign codes around town.
No, and as it turns out, they're really on the campus streets, and none of the campus streets actually border the property lines. So that's a, that's a easy benefit. They're actually, you know, at least a parking lot away from, from any neighboring developments or houses.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I have a question. Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
On this master sign plan, exhibit three, many of the new prototype sign designs will be implemented in the initial phase within the area. In later phases, existing directional signs will be replaced by new signs, et cetera. What is the time schedule for initial phase and later phases, I guess? Just can we get a little clarification on that? Is that, is that in a year, five years, 10 years?
Cheryl, could you use the mic, please? I'm sorry. And I hate to say it, but would you mind introducing yourself and spelling your name for the record?
Cheryl Schultz, and C-H-E-R-Y-L-S-C-H-U-L-T-Z. The, the new signs that go with the new developments will be in place hopefully this fall, depending on approval. If not this fall, we would like to have them done by this spring. Our first patient is expected in early June of 2010. So of course, we'd love to have the signs as soon as we possibly can get approval for them. The, the rest of it would be implemented incrementally based on our budget. They are currently doing a budgeting exercise, and they're hoping to, within a year or two, have the whole internal sign plan implemented with the entrances numbered. And that's, that's the big change, is directing people to a certain numbered entrance instead of using the, the street address of the building.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No. I guess I'd, we need, like to take... I guess I'd, we need, like to take testimony from the public. And I have, I have four names. Cheryl Schultz, I'm reading. Is that, oh. Does that make Rose?
Fedorowicz.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
F-E-D-R-O-S-E. F as in Frank, E-D, O-R-O-W-I-C as in cats, C as in zebra. I think first of all, to know what the signage is in Wheat Ridge. What is the biggest signage in Wheat Ridge allowed?
Ken, you want to?
If I, I.
Because we had a big problem.
Okay, he's going to look it up while you, you.
Okay. I could be asking another question.
If you, you can move forward.
On, I live right on the corner house on Balsam. So right across the street, there is an illuminated sign that, yes, it does come into the house. I'm sorry, yes, it does come into the house, that light. And so, don't tell me that an illuminated sign does not bother the neighbors because it does. If you want to know, you can, you're more than welcome to come to my house at nighttime. It does. So I want to know if that sign's going to be bigger, that is directly across the street going into the hospital.
Did I understand the applicant to say that none of the signs that are on the, on the perimeter streets are changing under this plan? Is that correct?
Main entrance, going inside.
Okay. And then my big question is, because this has been going on for a few years, and there's a lot of great minds in this room. Why didn't somebody think of this before? Why did you not know that we would need bigger signs? I could care less what Texas has. I'm sorry, I mean no offense to you, but I could care less what a hospital in Texas is doing. This is Wheat Ridge, Colorado, you know? So why didn't somebody think of this before? Why do you have to come back to city council or to the planning commission and ask them now for permission for a bigger sign or more signs? Why didn't you think of it before? Who's on your planning commission? Who do I direct that question to?
Well, it sounds, it sounds like you're directing the question to the applicant, to me.
Which would be Mr. Davis?
Well, excuse me?
Which would be Mr. Davis?
Well, I, I would normally ask that question of the, their consultant, Mr. Hill, but there may be some history to the change in what the standard is in signage. But if you'd care to attempt that.
Actually, Al.
Would you, I'm sorry, you're going to have to try the mic. If, would you like to step up?
I'll share with you.
I'm sorry. Is that appropriate? Any of you should feel free to respond if you'd like.
Okay. I would like to respond maybe to two questions, one of your concerns. The, the monument sign on the perimeter of the property is much larger than the ones we're putting in. And at least the signs that we're putting in will be internally illuminated with opaque faces. So the lights that are coming out of there is only the lettering themselves and not the whole sign face, like, say, Seven-Eleven or some big sign like that. So that's about as, as the least light is, it could be, possibly be, be done. Now, as far as the, is your second question about why wasn't thought of before?
Yes.
I'm going to introduce Al on that one, even though you introduced me, because I wasn't around at that time.
Well, as I, as I first spoke to, as, over the years, as Exempla continues to grow and expand, your signage also has to change. And so we haven't changed the main camp, campus signage for quite some time in a wholesale manner. We've kind of put together bits and pieces and made upgrades as we went along. One of the things that was brought to our attention, and it has for some time, is the complaints from visitors that come to the site. They cannot find where they're going. They're lost. People drive around. And so with this addition to Lutheran, the North Pavilion, one of the reasons we brought Roger on board was to assist us with the valuation of the signage. We are not, you know, that's not our core business. We're not signage experts. What we do is, we do have an understanding of our current signage plan is not working. It's not meeting the needs of the community. There is risk to people who come on site. And so when we bring an expert on board, identifies issues, and gives us a recommendation to make changes, we follow that. So over the years, we, the signage has been built up from one project to another project. Okay? But with this major addition, as I said, we have, our landmass is starting to be used up. It's becoming very dense. And so, and the buildings are very difficult. If you ever, a lot of times, people will stop me, a patient or visitor, and say, "Where is thirty-five fifty, Thirty-Fifth Street?" And so we have signs on the building that have the letters. It's very difficult. People can't see if they're not lit at night. And so to answer your question, once we understood what our issues were, what we needed to correct, we thought we'd bring it back to the city and get an update and approval of the master plan, which is a variance to the current code.
Okay.
So they are not working. People are struggling with that. I feel that there is a risk to anybody that comes on that campus. You get that many people, that many visits to ED, that many vehicles, and the state of mind, the state of mind that people are in, you need to make the change.
I agree.
Okay.
Sure, absolutely.
I would like to say one more thing. I live right across the street on Balsam. And I said from the beginning, when this went up, that there would be a lot more accidents. And there are a lot more accidents going into the hospital and coming out of the hospital. People do not know where to turn. They're looking, they're trying to find out where to turn, and bam, there's an accident. Or there's horns honking, constantly. You know? The light system either isn't working good, because if I want to make a left-hand turn going out of my house and going down east on Thirty-Eighth Street, I have to wait a very long time for that light to change. And if I'm backing out of my driveway, I have to be very careful of cars churning, making a right-hand turn going west. I have to be very careful of that. So there is a problem with the traffic on Thirty-Eighth and with that light being right there. So I can understand them wanting to, I think if they put an arrow, for God's sakes, or something, and said, "Hospital entrance." There's nothing that says "hospital entrance," is there? Does it say "hospital entrance" big?
It's the monument sign that's right there.
Entrance? I think what the problem is, my own personal opinion, you cannot see a parking lot. And if I was living on the other side of town and going to a strange hospital and trying to turn in, I would be looking for a parking lot. You cannot see a parking lot at Lutheran Hospital. And I hope to God that soon, not a year from now, but soon, we'll be able to see a parking lot and not just a building with nothing you can't see at the parking lot. You know, and so you can't, you can see the one sign, and that's it. And I can see in the hospital wanting to put more signs. Otherwise, you ramble. You just go on and on and on. And I'm probably the biggest complainer there, but you know what? My house has been ruined. My equity came down in the house, or my appraisal came down in the house because of the hospital and being right there on the corner. And I'm not a happy camper. And I'm really not a happy camper when there's a lot of wrecks there, because I'm afraid they're going to come right there, you know, turning right there on, on the, the houses or the cars that are right there parked on my street. And as far as Al's people parking, it was horrible until he took care of the problem. Horrible, as far as people parking on Balsam. I know it's free, and I know it's a, you know, anybody can park wherever, but for God's sakes, park where they're supposed to. And they didn't. I had nothing but trouble since this has started. I am now on full oxygen since it started. It has been a nightmare for me. And I mean a nightmare. So whatever we have to do, do it. But the light that comes in is horrible. So please don't tell me that an illuminated sign does not make a difference, because it does. You know? And like I say, I don't care what Texas is doing. I don't live in Texas. I live here in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Can you understand that? You know, or is that too hard for everybody? I mean, with all these great minds, like I say, and these great people, I still have a hard time not understanding why somebody didn't, wasn't appointed signage for the hospital. Does that, is that typical?
Well, I, I can't, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak to, to typical, but I think that we're trying, I think the goal here tonight is to put in a program, if we so believe that the one they're presenting is the appropriate program, that is going to help people know where to go. And, and if this works properly, I'm, it's my hope that there would be less off-site influence from what they're doing on their site. And that's, that would be the goal, in my mind, of having a signage program, directional program within the site. But we, there's obviously been, so presumably, they have found a problem and are making an attempt to address it. And to the, and we will try, appreciate the portion of your comments that, that speak to the issue of the internal signage that we're addressing tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I said the name of Judy Vessa. Is that correct?
My name's Judy Vessa, J-U-D-I, V as in victory, E-S-S-A. I live on Allison Court, which is east of your campus. And my biggest concern is with regard to the illumination. Because when I first moved into this home five years ago, there were a lot of evergreen trees on that berm behind my house. Your people came over and started trimming those trees, and now there's no protection from the illumination from the hospital. It's unusable. My patio's unusable because of the glare at night. If I hear a noise out in the yard, go outside to look, I get the glare of the lights from the hospital. And so I have concerns when they make statements that the illumination, although true, it is on your private campus, it does affect the neighbors, and it is affecting, affecting my home at least. So that's my biggest concern about the illumination.
I, I guess the question I'd like to ask is, does the, the proposal for the, these, to my mind, internal lights create, do you see that as compounding the existing situation in some way, these internal signs they're contemplating tonight?
Well, at this point, I believe so. If there's additional lighting that's going to be facing directly into my, my yard, my home, and I, I would guess that it would create a problem of some sort. I mean, we won't know until they put it up, but it's still going to be an issue, I believe, unless they plant more trees, more pine trees or something. I mean, raise our fences back there? I, I don't know what the answer is, but it, it is creating a problem.
We did make the determination, did we not, that additional, additional illuminated signs require separate permit?
That's correct.
And would that, would that review of that permit require a specific evaluation of illumination?
It would. They would need to provide that information. I would, I would just reemphasize that the type of illumination that they're proposing is internal, with an opaque background and illuminated letters. So the, it'd be my opinion that the, while the signs themselves, in some instances, may be visible from off-site, if one is, you know, looking towards the campus and looking to identify those, that they would not shed light on adjacent properties.
Okay. Thank you.
While they may not shed light.
I'm sorry.
While they may not shed light like a floodlight, it's still going to be a source of illumination.
Very interesting.
Could I ask a?
Sure.
On with this of the, of the applicant, so are, as I understand it, you're proposing to replace some signs that are currently basically floodlit with self-illuminated signs? Is that going to be the end result?
Well, yeah, should I go to the record?
Sure.
Okay. What we're, the, the area that you're talking about, basically in the front of the hospital, is that correct? The illuminated signs would, in terms of relatively, would probably be much smaller effect than, say, the streetlights that are down Lutheran Parkway, or any lights you might have in the parking lot. In addition, they'd be a lot less than, say, car headlights that are driving around the parking lot at night. Those would sometimes face your property exact as they're coming into the parking lot. So I, I would sympathize with you about the screening, screening of the property, which probably would be the most practical thing. Your patio in the daytime is looking out in a parking lot, which isn't so great either. And at night, no one? It's blocked. Okay. But the car headlights, the lights from the streetlight, maybe something else around there. I, I can, I can understand that. But the site, the signs themselves, as a matter of fact, will, are, are generally speaking east-west in orientation. In other words, they're, they're perpendicular to Lutheran Parkway. So they're not facing you broadside. So you could see them a little bit if you're at an angle to one of them, you'll be able to see some text. But in terms of light pollution, which you could categorize maybe the, the streetlights or something, I don't think you would, you would find that. You might be able to spot the sign. In other words, you can see that that sign is illuminated, but it wouldn't be like this thing that's, that's glowing at you. So that'd be my response to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone is welcome to come to my house after eight or nine o'clock at night and take a look at the illumination for the lights from my back door.
Thank you. That's all the names I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak this evening on this issue? There was one? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. Would you state and spill your name for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Michelle Genuine, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E, and the last name is Genuine, J-E-N-U-I-N-E. And I just have, it's, it's just a small question. And I know we're talking about internal signage, but I'm wondering, is there any, is there any external signage, other than the, the one on Thirty-Second and the two on Thirty-Eighth, directing people to where the hospital actually is? Because I'm wondering, and I don't, I know this may be a whole different issue, but maybe there wouldn't be accidents at that light if people knew ahead of time kind of where the hospital was. There's nothing on Wadsworth and Thirty-Eighth, nothing on Wadsworth and Thirty-Second, there's nothing on Kipling. And I'm, and I'm going to bring up the Texas thing, or Minnesota, or anywhere, you know, wherever you go, there are directions to hospitals, and I've never seen a direction to Lutheran. And the thing, the interesting thing is, though, obviously, you're getting a lot of business, but maybe it would cut down on some of those accidents if people kind of knew ahead of time where they would turn. Great.
I completely endorse what you're saying. What's really needed is some H-signs that are put up there. As we're driving tonight, you know, I've been here for several months, and, and the winter is a lot different than the summer because now the trees are, are full of foliage. And the entrance off of Thirty-Eighth, as we were coming in from Wadsworth, is really difficult to see the monument sign and tell you're right there. You can't see, because there's a big heavily foliage tree that hides the sign, and the sign is set back quite a ways from, from Thirty-Eighth Street. I don't know what the decisions were when that was done. It's not part of our project at all. But I do know that there's a problem there. And one of the easy fixes, I don't know if it's effective, is removing the tree, or whose property the tree is on, may not be ours. But certainly, H-signs would be a huge boon to there.
Thank you.
We need to refer to you, I, I think that's regulated. We have, we have requested additional signings like that on I-70 and Wadsworth, but there are, and I'm not sure if those are city, state, or federal regulations, so I understand. But so for us to go down and put a sign, I think we're regulated by that. It's not that we wouldn't do that, but I don't know of those other standards. But I think we're only, we can only, you know, the blue H-signs on Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-Second, there are a couple, then out on I- on 38th and 32nd, there are a couple, then out on I-70. But we attempted at one time to get a bigger sign out there, and CDOT, we weren't successful with that. So I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I'm just not sure what we can do about it. We don't have the authority. Maybe Ken can assist me, and looking into that.
Sure. Yeah, an off-site freestanding sign would not be allowed. By definition, all signs have to be located on the property to which they're advertising, unless they're a billboard, and billboards aren't, well, we have 16 billboards, and that's all that's allowed in the city, and they're not allowed in that part of the city. So I think the only avenue is the, is additional potential of the H-signs, as we're calling them. And I, the complicating factor also is that Wadsworth, of course, is a state highway, so that's subject to their approval and authorization as well. But we could certainly look, look into opportunities there.
I think, I think I'm gonna try and bring this back to the issue at hand. It's certainly a point worthy of consideration, that there be more off-site signage. But we're here to talk about the onsite signage tonight, so. And I'm more than willing to, if you have, would like to address that issue.
I have no other, I just-
Okay, great. Do I have any other? Sure, come on forward.
Your name for the record, please?
My name is Raymond, R-A-Y-M-O-N-D, Hokanson, H-O-K-A-N-S-O-N. An unofficial senior on that, because there is a junior that I'm forever getting mixed up with. I live at 8620 West 32nd Place. And I drive by the south entrance to the hospital many times a day. Because that's, we go out through Dudley and then out through 32nd. And more often than not, it's towards Wadsworth, but we do go to Kipling. And I would say that, this isn't what I planned on saying, but the lady ahead of me, the fact that there's nothing to let you know until you're almost upon it, that, hey, there's a hospital entrance right there. And H-signs down the ways on each side would help. Just say, hey, hospital coming. That's her normal type of street signs that you'd be, I'm surprised we're not there myself. I have a, part of it starts with a question on this one sheet that compares the allowed by city code and the proposed by applicant on the planning division staff report. Page four. Now, I was looking, trying to see what the differences were here, and then the major one seemed to have been that top, top two boxes. And the two boxes don't seem to be correlated as to what information, what's allowed by city code and what's being proposed. And what I'm trying to understand is, on the city sign code, does that include all on-property, private property?
Ken, you'd like to respond?
It does. The way signs are defined in our municipal code, they need to be visible to the general public. So because the internal streets for this campus really function to a large extent, they serve multiple lots, they serve multiple users, we consider them to be signs, even though they're on, most signs are on private property. These are also adjacent to private streets, but we still consider them to be signs.
Consider all kinds of signs?
They're considered signs as defined by the municipal code. There are different types. There's some that are considered freestanding signs. These in particular are mostly considered directional signs.
Okay. And the way this was looking here, this was talking to the top boxes, it says, allowed by city codes, four square feet on information, of information each. And then over here, the request is for 45 square feet. And I'm, is that a little confused here, typo or whatever? Informational, 17 square feet, et cetera. Much, much shorter heights than the other is giving. And so I was just trying to understand exactly what the variance situation really is.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah. And section of the court showing, review, reserved in case this question came up from someone, and it's right up here. So this is just to examine, you know, you're gonna have trouble. Do you want to maybe stand, we can see better? Is it okay?
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, you can look right here if you want to.
Okay.
So the municipal code has two categories of signs in the code for properties. Either building mounted mines, or building mounted signs or freestanding signs. Now, freestanding signs have two subcategories, and that's it. They're either something called freestanding signs or informational signs accessory to the primary use. Okay, so here's the, what they say about freestanding signs. They, they're only two allowed per development. And that works for most properties, to have two big signs. And the signs are about the size of those signs that are out on 38th Street or 34th Street. They're, they allow, see, that's about a 12 by 5, I think about 60 square feet. I think they allow like 70 square feet.
There ain't no sign on the south side.
Yeah. So these are legal in size, those out there. But they're only allowed two, and they had to go through a PhD amendment to get the third sign. So those signs are not part of this at all. They're only, we're only talking about, those are the signs out here, and here, and here. They're not, the one you drive through is down here. They don't include any of the signs in there. So those are kind of left hanging. What about those? We've already used our two signs up. So this is how that was. There were two that were granted as part of the amendment, and that's probably one you drive by. And here's the other category, informational signs accessory to the primary use. The quantity is unlimited. They don't care how many you have. But they're limited to four square feet, or a height limit of three, three foot tall. So you know what they're really trying to govern there is, it's like drive-throughs and restaurants, drive-through restaurants, that kind of thing? Because here's the sizes of what that would actually be. A stop sign, 30 inches by 30 inches, is only 5.4 square feet. But that's bigger than four square feet that would be allowable. So, you know, right turn only, that's five square feet right there. It's 30 inches by 24 inches. So, and they're eight foot tall, so a stop sign wouldn't conform. Here's an actual stop sign in Wadsworth, 30 inches on the side. See, you work it all out with its geometry, and it's 5. something square feet. So here's what they were really trying to govern with that category, informational signs. Something like that. If you had to take the M off the top. Whatever that meant. But this part right through here, that's what they were trying to govern, signs like that. But they didn't anticipate anything like a campus. They needed to direct, actually direct you around driveways and parking lots and multiple buildings and entrances. So they just don't have a category for us. So we got a 92-acre campus. What a category we use, that is just none for us to use. So what our remedy is, is to develop something reasonable and propose it to the planning commission, and see, and have it judge on its own merits. So there are three ways to do that. We could use a PhD amendment, like they had in the past, but to have a separate PhD amendment has to go to city council, and then you might have to do it all over again for a new batch of signs. Of variances, you'd have to do a variance for every time a new sign was requested, you have to go back and get another variance for the sign. Or they offer a master sign plan. So we thought that was a good idea, and so did the city staff. They recommended we use that. But one problem with that is that bottom line. So we're allowed, we're allowed four square feet of area. That would only allow us to have six square feet of sign. Where, that's just barely bigger than a stop sign. So that's why we're asking for a variance to up that a little bit, to something more conventional. So we're asking for 45 square feet on our largest directional signs. Some of the smaller ones will be smaller. But that's why we're doing, and only 4.5 feet in height. So, you know, we're eight foot in height now, so that's why we wanted that.
So you're talking four different sign categories?
Well, these signs, I don't know why they listed them all. Really, if they just listed the first one to allow that big of a sign, that would have covered all the rest of them. Because all the rest of them, these are just secondary directional signs, smaller. Like when you're going around a parking lot, you just need a little bitty sign. But even that's bigger than a stop sign. So that's what this whole thing was, was all about.
Thank you.
I would like to make just a quick comment.
Sure.
Since this is especially about signs, signs at the hospital. I don't know, this has nothing to do with the hospital specifically as such, but there's been, this is the second time there's been a public hearing available for a, something being brought before the panel, the zoning. And it's the first one I've been able to attend. Because getting the details, when they're placed right there on 32nd Avenue, the only way I'm gonna be able to take and read what it says, the date, and the time, and what it's about, is to possibly expose myself to a summons by a police. Because there's, right there, where there's no place to stop, no place to leave the car. If you're alone, you can't get out. It's a kind of a catch-22 situation. I think that there needs to be possibly some thought given to people that have those signs that have to go out, to are they really going to be readable? And make sure that the people that put them out follow guidance where the, us, the, the amounts to, or matters to, is gonna be able to see it, understand it, and know what's going on. I finally found out the date and the time this afternoon.
Thank you. Do I have any other persons in the audience interested in speaking that has not already spoken this evening? Or if they have spoken, would have something more to add? With that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up the discussion and the council. Send them in.
I have a couple of questions, but I need to take a break for about two seconds.
Do you want to pause the public? Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we'll resume at 10 after 8:00.
Commissioners and/or last questions to staff or the applicant? Anybody got anything, any remaining questions?
I guess, I just wanted to clarify. It's my understanding, then, that the reason we're looking at this is because the signs are visible from the private streets on campus that are used by the public.
Correct. Jim?
And if I'm understanding right, illuminated signs will have just the letters illuminated and not the whole sign? Is that correct? Are we having white letters on a dark background, or?
And we hadn't, we haven't gone so far in our, I mean, in our approval by the campus to state that all, all future signs on campus will be internally illuminated. That discussion simply never has happened. But it turns out that all the signs in the hospital main entry that they're gonna build right now, all are going to be internally illuminated or not illuminated at all, and just with reflective vinyl on them that the streetlights and car headlights would illuminate. Those would be the smallest directional signs inside the parking lots. So the question on whether future signs, the replacement signs along the public streets that we'd put in, the new-style signs, whether those would be internally or externally illuminated, or they would, for budgetary reasons, only use reflective vinyl on those signs, I don't officially have the answer to that. Al could maybe make a decision here among you, but I couldn't myself.
Thank you. I guess that brings in another question for clarification. If we approve this, we're approving those illuminated signs that are being requested at this time? And then future signs, if they're illuminated, have to come before us?
Wouldn't necessarily have to come before you. They'd have to be consistent with previous approvals, established documents. But what's before the commission tonight is simply, is really three things. It's the, the wall identification signs, the building number concept signs that is their new, part of their new wayfinding system. The internal directional signs, some of which would be internally illuminated, some of which would be, would not be illuminated. And then the banner program that was outlined. So it doesn't, it doesn't apply to the perimeter monument freestanding size. Anyone else?
This is more comment. Because I don't believe you said it during your presentation. Could you just tell us for the record, Ken, staff's position on the, on the proposal?
We do support the request. We do believe this is consistent with the intent of a master sign plan to create a consistent, you know, well-designed system of signs that, in this case, assists the customers and the clients that are using this campus. We do believe that it's consistent with the variance criteria in terms of the exceptions that are being requested to the size and banner requirements. In response to a previous question, I would just add that the total amount of freestanding sign, signage that's allowed is actually 400 square feet. So it is a fairly significant number. Any other questions?
I have one, just a process question. With five of us, we have a quorum, but this is a variance. Does it require four votes tonight to approve this? Or is this a simple majority?
I believe it's a simple majority, but let me, let me double-check that.
It would seem to be. I don't, I'd like, I really would like to- I don't, I'd, I really would like to, it's a certain, I'm not clear, because variants, are we approving a master sign plan or are we approving a variance? And I think it's the same.
Both. And there's actually two motions that you'll need to make. One is for approval of the variance, the variances that are being requested. And the second, if that's approved, is approval of the master sign plan.
And don't we have to approve the variance first? Because the variance?
Right.
Okay.
The variance may require four votes.
While he's looking that up, can I comment?
Yeah, I think we have some, I'd love to have discussion.
First of all, I do have quite a bit of signing experience in a previous life. When I worked with Federal Highway Administration, I designed quite a few signing projects and actually did some work on the MUTCD that's referenced in this document. And I do believe that the signing plan is, I read through the whole thing, I really do believe it's well-developed, makes a lot of sense. The one big difference in this, that the type of signing jobs I did is you don't like too much information on a sign because it, going at high speeds, it tends to confuse people. In this case, you know, the information needs to be presented as it's proposed. And it's, you know, it makes a lot of sense. We are going to be going slower speeds for these signs. The concern I have is how grossly we're different than the ordinance. And this isn't the first time we're asked to, you know, act on things that basically throw out the ordinance. And, you know, the ordinance doesn't apply to us, type of situation. And the concern again is the precedence that we're setting. You know, what are we trying to say here? Are we saying that, well, anybody can come in here and say, well, the ordinance just doesn't apply to us, so we need to, we don't need to be concerned with it? Or, or are we saying, well, as long as you're big enough, then we don't need to comply with the ordinances? That concerns me. Whether, whether that tells me that I'm going to not vote for what I consider a good plan, something that's needed, something that, you know, I take to heart, you know, having, you know, when people go to an emergency room, they need clear signing. And this is clear signing that's presented. I think some of the concerns that the public has presented are very legitimate concerns. But I don't really think they have anything to do with the matter at hand. Because there's going to be very little or no additional impact on any adjacent properties caused by this signing. If there's any, whatever lighting is being presented off property is being, is there because of existing signing or existing lighting, existing problems. What's being proposed here would add very little, if any, to that problem. I think there's been some legitimate concerns with accidents on site or at the entrances, again, which is not part of this ordinance. So I would be supporting it, but I think there are some serious things that need to be considered by the city in regards to these types of things.
Jim?
I would like to thank the citizens for speaking up on some issues that we weren't aware of. I don't drive by there very often, and I don't live by there. So the impact from the hospital isn't very big on me. So thank you for doing that. I think the issue tonight is internal signage. And that's why I think it's not comparable to signs on the street in other business districts. And so that's how I can support it, where I wouldn't support variances of the same size on streets or highly visible corner lots or things like that.
Well, I'm not the brightest bulb on the porch all the time, but I'm among those people who've been lost inside of Lutheran's campus. So anything that the hospital can do, I think, to help folks get around is a good thing. And certainly I would welcome any help there. The size that Henry referred to, I, when I first came to Planning Commission, had the same sorts of concerns when we had another signage issue come before us. And I actually, after seeing the final sign next to the largest building in Wheat Ridge, understood what Commissioner Reinhardt had said during our discussion in, which I poo-pooed at the time and came to regret. But there is really a scale that goes with signage, I think. And when you're dealing with a property, a campus the size of Lutheran, I think you do need to make some variance to the code to allow for scale. And I think that Lutheran and their consultant have done a nice job of bringing scale to the campus with this. And really, most of the signage, as I've read through it, isn't larger than signage that's currently on the campus. There'll be more of them. But the signs are not in and of themselves much larger than they currently are. So as I looked at this, I didn't see it as we're increasing from the variance. I looked at it as, are we increasing from what's already there? And to me, the scale of the increase from what's already there is minimal and acceptable, especially if we can get clearer signage that allows people to get around the campus more easily. And I agree with what Commissioner Chilvers and you both said about the amount of light given off and the trade-offs involved with that. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Steve, Henry, you want to get?
Just a, just a response and for a little clarification. I fully support what's been presented. I think that it's an excellent job. Again, my concern is a problem with the ordinance if we have to make such great changes, you know, the variance. I mean, there's ten times size, or increase, over ten times size increase requested. To me, that there's something wrong with the ordinance for internal signing that really is not seen by anybody outside the property boundary.
At some risk of having a debate that doesn't serve any purpose but each other, I would suggest that, I look at that question Henry's raising a little differently. I think that you write an ordinance, we have a city which the ordinance is written for the substantial portion of the uses and applications that are in the city. And there are a very small number of applications to which the ordinance doesn't really apply in that the code allows for the option of sign plan specifically to address a circumstance. So the judgment would be ours as to whether this is a situation that doesn't apply on the rest of the, on the rest of the code. So, and then I'm not going to belabor that anymore, I already have. The issue at hand, I think, is whether the internal signage that's proposed is reasonable, appropriate, and in my mind, I'd like to think that there was an aesthetic component of that. I think this proposal meets, meets all those requirements. I have, I would, I would love to see us tackling the issue of access into the site as well. Although there are somewhat competing interests in that realm, which fortunately we don't have to tackle tonight, between better ways to get into the sign and more impact on the direct neighbors. But for tonight, I think we have a good proposal for the internal signing. I'll be supporting it. And with that, I'd be prepared to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, the voter requirements for the Board of Adjustment do apply when the Planning Commission votes on the variance portion of the application. So to support that request, a vote of, for affirmative votes would be required.
Will be required. I was afraid of that. So with that.
Did you have some language that we wanted added to?
I would propose a condition that all illuminated signs will apply for and receive an electrical
You going to give it a try, Jim?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a variance being considered in conjunction with case number WZ-0905. A request for a master sign plan with a variance to allow Planning Commission to exceed the fifty percent increase in size, number, and location for the following reasons. The request would not alter the essential character of the locality. The applicant is proposing an investment in the property. There is a unique hardship due to the large size of the property and numerous building and parking areas. The request would not be detrimental to public welfare and would not be injurious to neighboring property or improvements. The criteria used to evaluate a variance support the request. Condition goes with the master sign plan, is that correct?
Yep.
Second the motion.
Call the members.
The motion passes five zero.
With that having passed, I'd like to make a motion for a master sign plan. I move to approve case number WZ-0905. A request for approval of a master sign plan for property located at eight three zero zero West Thirty-Eighth Avenue for the following reasons. The existing sign code does not adequately address a campus environment. And the proposed sign plan is well-planned and demonstrates unification and integration of architectural style, size, color, placement, and lighting elements with the following condition. All illuminated signs must apply for and receive an electrical permit.
And that motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And that, I lost my agenda.[1564.41][1564.41][laughing] Thank you. Oh, I wrote on it. I guess, do we have any new business?
The only thing I have is just a reminder that there is a joint study session coming up with City Council to discuss the draft comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge. That's coming up next Monday at six-thirty. Will be the first item on the agenda. And to that end, I have a handout, which is the implementation section of the comp plan that was not included in your, the previous distribution.
Anyone on the council?
I had an interesting experience. I think some of you might, might like a little bit about it. I won't bore you long. I went to a meeting yesterday hosted by the Home Builders Association on the new zoning code in the, in the city and county of Denver. And suffice it to say that in my view, they're in the process of making, of putting a substantial number of, of properties in the community into non-conforming uses by the way they're redrafting the ordinance. And with us having just spent a brutal amount of time trying to find ordinance consistent where our current uses are reasonably consistent with our current zoning, I wish their Planning Commission for the next thirty years, good luck. Good luck resolving the problems that their planning department's creating for them today. And I'm sure I can bore anybody to death who wants to know more about that. So I just, they're trying some very interesting things, some very complicated things. But as near as I can tell, at the table, the committee meeting I was at, they think that they've put, I think it was six of the eleven homes of the City Council people, of the City and Council of Denver, into non-conformance with the current, with the proposed code. Having been the Director of Development for the Lowry Redevelopment, I will tell you there is not a single house within the confines of the Lowry Redevelopment that would meet the current zoning standard that they are proposing for Denver. And I understand it's also true at Stapleton. And, but I understand it's very visionary. So I wish them luck. I wish them and luck with their vision. And anybody, anybody else? I'd entertain a motion, adjourned.
Well, I got a question on.